Call this meeting to order. Vice Mayor, always a pleasure. Council members, member of the staff, members of public, thanks you much for being here. We appreciate not only your attendance, your participation, and your input. Would you please call a roll, Russell?
Councilmember Doug McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Freddie Fissickelli?
Here.
Councilmember Steve Brightcrude?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gary Jablonski?
Here.
Mayor Jeff Nelson.
Yes, again, this is a meeting of the LPA, the Local Planning Agency, which is us, quasi judicial hearings. Can we all stand, please, for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know that there's been some that have been withdrawn, and I know that there's some people that are here that I don't know if they were aware or not, but the, let's The Hindu temple, I know that that one was, no, I'm sorry, that's a regular meeting. I apologize. I apologize. Okay, with that being said, sorry about that. We'll talk about that during the regular meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Russell, to read into the record the resolution.
Resolution of the Local Planning Agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, the LPA, recommending the adoption of amendments to the objectives and policies within several elements of the adopted Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan pertaining to Broward County Land Use Plan, consistency requirements, intergovernmental coordination, and local street connections, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell.
Gary?
Yeah, I have some comments I'd like to put out and concerns up front before we get into this too deeply on TE policy 1.2-E.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yeah.
Just for the record, if you could do a motion, then discuss that, if it sounds like you may be amending or whatever you're doing, just so that, under parliamentary procedure, you're speaking about something.
I was gonna turn it over to you, Keith, for the, normally you do such a great job with the introduction, but absolutely.
Okay.
We need a motion in a second to talk about.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, now we got a motion in a second. Go ahead, Gary, sorry about that.
Thank you. No, that's right. Thank you for straightening me out on that. I have concerns, and my neighborhood has concerns on TE policy 1.2-E, and it was brought to me through the HOA recently, and it deals with the part of the last sentence on that policy. The neighborhood is very concerned about any east-west intrusions, multipurpose trails, horse trails, et cetera, and they would like to see that stricken from the policy, as I would, and I will not be able to support this as it is right now unless we amend that. What I would like to do as a suggestion is the final line right after the word "connections" while preserving the east-west continuity of the town's equestrian recreation trail system. I'd like to have that taken, removed. Keith, how would be the best way to facilitate that?
I'm sorry.
Or bring it to?
I just got current with you. Are you saying to end the line after the word "connections"?
Yes, sir.
So, and this is why I know they jumped on the motion, but you're essentially seeking council support to amend that policy to remove while preserving the east-west continuity of the town's equestrian system?
That's correct.
Right. So, a maker of the motion could decide whether or not they'd amend in the second amendment, or if not, you'll have to vote it down and do a new motion later.
Doug's reading.
I didn't make the motion.
No, Doug did.
Yeah, I'm.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
No, that's okay.
So, you'd like me to amend it to leave out?
He wants it taken out here. That's what he wants it taken out.
I don't have a problem removing this, but I guess my question is, we already have some that are already existing that people use. Is that gonna apply?
Say that last part again, I'm sorry.
I think you have some that people already use that are kinda in place that people go across now on, so I don't have a problem removing this, but the people that use the ones that are already there, are we gonna close those, or what's the thought process?
No, the only trails we have are north-south. They come in off of Griffin Road in Rolling Oak. There's no east-west access.
At all? Nobody takes those?
Zero. And the area, the neighborhood, has made it abundantly clear to me that they want to maintain that.
Okay. Me personally, I don't have a problem modifying this. Anybody else okay with that? I mean, I'm just.
Listen, I certainly respect not only your opinion, but, you know, I know you know what's going on out there, Gary, and I don't have any problems supporting that recommendation.
All right, well, I guess on page five of 1.2-E, after "connections" to the end of that paragraph, remove that, and I'll modify my motion to that effect.
Is that's all you want to, you want to remove while preserving the east-west continuity of the town's equestrian trail system? Is that what you want to remove?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
I'm sorry, Doug, I missed your comment.
Yeah, I amended my motion for approval to eliminate "after connections" under the policy 1.2-E while preserving the east-west continuity of the town's equestrian and recreational trails to remove that part.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm trying to reconcile the two between what Gary had.
That's what he's asking for. Exactly what I'm saying is what I'm doing.
Okay, so essentially to remove while preserving the east-west continuity of the town's equestrian recreation trails.
Removing that.
Which is what you had.
What's he's asked for.
Okay, okay. Freddie?
Yeah, I have a problem with the, with removing any right-ofways. I have, I know what, I know what the town of Rolling Oaks wants, and I support them a hundred percent to keeping that eastern and western boundary closed, but I'm, I don't want to get into practice of giving up any easements and reservations that we may need in the future. If you can word it in any way, Gary, that it can't go any further than the western boundary and the eastern boundary, I'll support you a hundred percent. But when you start giving up right-ofways, we're in problems. We're gonna have problems.
Well, one of, one of the concerns of the residential area out there is the Sheridan Street connection.
How is Sheridan Street gonna affect the east-west?
It's not. It's part of the rights-of-way that we would potentially be giving up at some future date. In other words, connecting Mather to Sheridan, because I believe that's the crux of the first part of it.
That's a northwest, that's a northeast, south easement.
Well, it's dealing, it's dealing with it in general, all local street connections, the Southwest 184th, and by abandoning the portions of intersection right-ofway easements and arrangements that may accommodate such connections off of 184th.
Well, Gary, I'll support anything you want to do, even if you want to erect a wall on the western boundary and on the eastern boundary, I'll support you a hundred percent, but I'm not for giving up any easements, because I think it's gonna come back and bite us later. I, I don't see anything that even indicates that we're trying to, you know, I think we hit that, and they tried to do it 172nd, and we found out what y'all want, and I don't think we've, we've tried to do anything since then, but I'll support you any way you want to to close the east and west boundaries, but.
Well, that's essentially what this is doing. The first one, 1.2, is doing that, and then 1.2-F is vacating any additional access, which would be the Sheridan.
If they.
I misspoke earlier.
If they can, you know, write that anyway, that it'll guarantee that there's no access east and west, I'll support you a hundred percent.
Well, that's how, that's how it's written.
Yeah, but that's not saying that here. I mean, it's saying here you want to abandon of the portions of intersection right-ofways, easements, and reservations that would accommodate such connections. I don't know, I'm going to the attorney. Keith?
Keith.
What could we get into on that if we, you know, when we start giving up right-ofways, we're opening a big door.
I, I mean, this is a policy decision, councilmember. What you're saying is actually, is correct, that this language would seek for the town to initiate a vacation and abandonment of rights-of-way and easements that would accommodate connections to 184th. So, what you're saying is correct.
We can, can we write it that we would have it so that it would prevent any right-ofways being utilized? Can we do it as, so we can, we write in there, we don't know what's gonna happen for our town in 15, 20 years from now. You know, we may have a whole group of different people living here, and they want to do something, and we may be penalized. I, I know what Rolling Oaks wants, and I support it a hundred percent, but I'm just thinking what's gonna happen in the future. When you start giving up right-ofways that we have now, if we can write that some way that if that 184th ever does go through, it can't have any in-connecting ways in there, I'll support it a hundred percent.
Councilmember, to, and I apologize, but to, under your wording, you know, to just help for, for sake of discussion, what you're trying to say is essentially, local street connections with Southwest 184th Avenue shall not be permitted. The town shall further this policy by prohibiting such connections.
Yeah, as long as it says that without giving up easements, can we do that?
Yes, yeah, you're the council, you can do whatever you want.
I say I'll support you a hundred percent of that, Gary, if you can word it that way, where, well.
It says that.
It says it there, you know.
That's exactly what it said.
You know, this is for the future of Rolling Oaks. That's what this whole, the purpose of this is.
Right.
It's not for right now, it's for 15.
So, what, out of 1.2-F, what would you like to remove? What's wrong with the rest of 1.2-F?
That one's fine.
Okay.
I, the community has made it abundantly clear to me that they do not want any east-west trails, they don't want any connect.
Understood. I, I think I've addressed that, I don't know anybody second it yet, but.
No, you got, you made the motion, Gary seconded.
Okay.
No, actually, I seconded it.
I'm sorry, Steve seconded, I apologize, but I know you have a comment, you have a comment, Steve.
Right. Freddie, I just wanted to, I think the, the thought that you're expressing is exactly the concern that the folks in Rolling Oaks have.
I think so.
That I think they feel comfortable that the current council would not do anything to ever allow any sort of a connection east-west into Rolling Oaks, but they don't know, like you, like you pointed out, who knows what a council 15, 20 years from now will want to do? And so, what this does is it basically takes it off the table, so that a council 15 or 20 years from now no longer has the right, even if they change their thought process, they won't have the easements to go ahead and put in those intersections. And so, I think that's why it's critical to Rolling Oaks to leave that the way it is and get it off. I, I just want to make sure, and I'm 95% sure this is true, but I want to make sure that we're just removing the easements for the intersections and that we're not giving away any easements to actually.
That's what I'm concerned about.
To build the road itself.
It's all right, this is just the intersection.
That's what I, that's the way I read it, I just wanted to make sure. So, so, you know, I'm just speaking for myself, I'm comfortable with leaving in the easements the way it's written there, because I think that's exactly addresses the concern that they have in Rolling Oaks, to be honest with you.
Keith, can I ask?
Go ahead, Freddie.
Keith, what I'd be concerned, I'm, I'm almost positive if I'm wrong, somebody correct me, 184th is a section line. Under the present conditions now, there's a, there's a possibility of even a, right now, instead of the normal, if they went to a four-lane road, it'd be additional 25 if they went to just bigger than that, but that right-ofway is there. It's in the books for the state, if I'm not mistaken. I know it's for town, it's state, I don't know if it's for the whole state, but if you're, if you're on a section line or a quarter-section line, and you've built a house, you've gotta set back a certain amount of feet. I know, I live on a quarter-section line, and I, we had to give an additional 25 feet. That road dead-ends right now, it's never gonna be a four-lane road, but still, when they put in, like, 184th is a section line, there's a right-ofway there, a possible right-ofway of up to 60 feet, so I just want to make sure we're not giving that up when we give up this here, because we don't know when that road's gonna, what's gonna go in that road, and I don't think we can, we can do it. Keith, can we overrule a, that type of a rule?
A couple of things. This does not affect or vacate in any way 184th. You couldn't vacate 184th because it's on the traffic wave plan. What this does vacate is any intersection to 184th, meaning that under this.
I have no problem with that.
And that's all this does.
As long as it doesn't interfere with the normal right-ofway that would be there.
Right.
When I say north-south right-ofway.
Correct, right.
You can, you can write in there east-west right-ofways, I have no problem, just don't affect the north-south right-ofway, because that developer that bought that property, when he develops it, he's, he's gonna, if we give it up now, we're giving it up to him, and I don't think we had, we should be doing that. But whenever the people that Downey sold to puts in that road, they've got to leave the right-ofway for a section line.
A couple of things, just so you know, because I know Downey pretty well, and I actually showed Councilmember Brightcrude the other day, Downey has his whole slew of other issues, because the access to Downey where 184th is shown on a map is not owned by the county, it's not owned by Downey, it's owned by a nursery. So, Downey cannot access its site off of 184th at this time, which is one of the reasons why you haven't seen Downey before you, they're working on their own access issues right now.
The right-ofway that he has in there now, in other words, there's a right-ofway there, nobody's utilizing, the nursery hasn't utilized it, nobody has, but that right-ofway's there.
The right-ofway has not been dedicated to Broward County.
Pardon?
It's future right-ofway, it's on, shown on a map as future.
Yes.
It has not been dedicated to Broward County, it's still owned by the nursery.
Yeah, I'm saying.
If you go on the property appraisal site.
That nursery does not have the power, not, if, if they decide to put in a four, six-lane road, the nursery don't have any status on it. It's there.
Well, the county would have to eminent domain the property.
No, not for, not for, I may be wrong, Keith, but my understanding, and I don't have a copy of it, but there's a law on the books right now that says on every section line and every quarter-section line in South Florida, I know it is, I don't know if it's all over the state, you have to have a right-ofway, at least, if that's not the case, Broward County gave me a problem when my son built his house, they would not let us build until we set it back 25 feet, and we don't, we didn't, we still own the right-ofway, but there's, if you look at Landmark right now, you see that big right-ofway there? That's why that right-ofway's there, that's being mowed every day, because that's a quarter-section line, and they had to give it up. There's only one, one house that Broward County goofed up on that street, and it's one house that's facing north, I mean, south, and they didn't make him stay back far enough. If they ever had to go in there, I doubt if they ever will, they're gonna have trouble with that house. But everybody else on that street had to give up the additional 25 feet because of that state law.
And, and I think we're saying the same thing, you're saying had to give up, they had to give up when they developed the property. When Landmark went to develop the property, the county said to them, this is on our right-ofway map, you need to give us this property. In the case of the Landscape Nursery, for example, they're not developing their property, so there's nothing that would require them to give it up unless they were seeking something.
Well.
So, in order to take that entrance to 184th, someone would have to actually do a taking to take it.
Well, to think of it as, Keith, now, I went through this and almost went to court, so I pretty well know what I'm talking about. Landmark had two choices. They could dedicate, they could give the property to Landmark, or they could just set back, they could let them set back the thing, and I think if you check, Landmark's mowing that property, because they still own the property. Now, they, they could've went and, and said, and taken to court and say, like we did with my son's house, we'll set it back, but if you ever want to come in here and do this, the Fifth Amendment says you don't give away anything, Gary, and the Fifth Amendment says that you, and that we do it, everybody's doing it today, are telling those people, you have to give me that property. That's not the truth. You don't have to give away anything, the Fifth Amendment tells you that. They'll tell you, if you don't like it, take me to court. Nobody's gonna give three years' time to go to court, so they give it to the county. We had that choice, and we decided to move back to 25 feet, we still own the property. If you ever, if they ever want to come in to do that, they'd have to buy the property from us, and that's the law. But we, all the town, Broward County does it today, and to me, it's extortion, but who's gonna take them to court? But what I'm worried about here, this is a whole different subject, is I don't want to give up some right-ofways north and south that could hurt us. That's all I'm looking for.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, Freddie, I agree with you a hundred percent. I don't want to give, I want to make sure, and I think I have the assurance from Keith, that we're not giving up any right-ofways north and south for 184th. What we're giving up are additional right-ofways that would be for intersections east and west. Is that correct, Keith?
If you want to clarify, I'd just say where it says an abandonment of the portions of intersecting east-west right-ofway.
That's fine with me, just long we know what we're talking about.
I will amend my second based on those additions, the, the removal of the last phrase after "connections" and the addition of "east-west" in the right-ofway.
I would say rights-of-way for east-west streets, just to clarify it even further.
Jeff, does that also need to occur in 1.2-F as well for consistency?
You were the second, Doug, do you have any problem?
No, not a problem at all. I was just waiting for Jeff, Keith had a question for Jeff, and when you hear what the comeback is.
And just to confirm, too, eliminating the last after the Commonwealth preserving the east-west continuity of the town's equestrian and recreational trail system, we're gonna eliminate that?
Yes.
Well, we're, I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, on 1.2-F, I don't think we'd use the same language, but I think we'd want to, we'd want to state that it does not apply to 184th.
No, actually, it's, it's fine the way it is on 1.2-F.
I think it is.
I just reread it. It, that's, you're right for Rolling Oaks, so that's fine, it doesn't affect any other streets.
Yeah, we wouldn't want 184th to be an exception, because that's included.
Yeah. Okay, I think we have a consensus on 1.2-dash-E, F, no issues. Are there any other issues?
Some public comments.
You're gonna get a public, it's one resolution, Noel, when we get through it, you're taking notes, I'm sure, when we get through it, please, are there any other issues with any of the objectives and policies?
Yeah, just one quick question, because whenever, what he said there made me look at something. Will that affect as it's shared in, Keith says, you know, he says no local connection could be at 184th Avenue, is that would be on, would the Griffin Road and Sheridan have any problem with that?
I mean, that's the purpose of it, is to not allow it to connect to Sheridan.
What do you think, Jeff?
Are you talking about 1.2-E or F?
Huh?
1.2-E or F?
I'm talking about 1.2-E.
Right, that's what I said.
It says local street connections to 184th should not be permitted. I, I think if you wanted the, other than Sheridan and Griffin, if you added that to it, I think it'd be pretty, pretty clear, but I'd be worried about in the future.
Councilmember Fissickelli, local streets are defined in the comp plan, and they would not include Sheridan or Griffin. Local streets are local access streets.
Okay, they're, that's right, they're both Broward County streets, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other policies, any other objectives or policies that you'd like to address with the exception of 1.2-E? Seeing none, again, we got a motion and a second with the modification, we'll go over that one more time. And again, Keith, we're talking about including after, what is it, abandonment, the east and west rights-ofways?
After connections.
Enter, east-west interconnections, okay? And eliminating the last part after connections, the Commonwealth preserving the east-west continuity of the town's equestrian and recreational trail system. Everything else is okay? Okay? Now, public comment?
Public comment after the fact. Noel Hollings, who is Chair of the Compliment Plan Advisory Board. I'm ashamed of you, Gary, Jerry. You didn't come to us, you didn't give the considerations, you sat there and be, sat quiet. Anyway, it's done. What you're doing tonight is changing 14 years of policy that this council has had, and I'm talking about the trail system. The trail system has been designed, and you have put into place pieces of it on Sterling Road all the way across to 172nd. You've put pieces in spot on the west side coming east. It has always been the intention of this council that the trail system shall have a safe, safe conduit through the middle of town. The Parks Board has approved that, the comp plan has put it into the effect in the trail system, and now find that we want it closed. It's not for vehicular traffic, it is for the horses. The only exit for the horses will be Mather Boulevard at Griffin Road, one of the most intense driver-confused exits in our municipality. I have watched several horses almost get hit by people going down Griffin or exiting Mather. That is not to be the only exit for horses within our town. We have decided that we should be an equestrian-friendly community, and this is not equestrian-friendly. We have, I got five minutes, as Chair of the Comp Plan Board.
You've got three minutes, and but I'm gonna extend you some extra time, because I always do, because we want your feedback and your comments, so go ahead, Noel.
So, this is a major change by this council, very horse-unfriendly, in supposedly a horse-friendly The entrances and exits for the horses, we're not talking about vehicles, we're talking about the multipurpose trail that this council has put in effect across Sterling Road and had developers give up land for it and maintain it. If you're going to do this, what are you going to do with the rest of the trails? You gonna give them back to the developers? The one by the airport that the developer is supposed to put in place? You fought with them on that. You have not, on a whim, thought about this at all. This is not something you should do. The multipurpose trails east and west are a necessity for our town. They allow people from 170. They allow people from 172nd to go by the back road by horses, down to the Fishing Hole Park, where there's going to be an equestrian ring if they so desire, not out on Griffin, where they have to go now, if you pass this. Think about it. It is a major change to the policy of this town, and I hope you will re-put it back in, since you already seem to make your mind up to close everything for the multipurpose trails. The multipurpose trails do not have vehicles on it.
Finish up, Noel, we get the point.
The Comprehensive Plan has approved this and asked that you put it into effect, especially the trails. The Parks Board sent it to us before. The Infrastructure Board has approved it, the trail system through the center of town, and the Comp Plan Board has said to put it into effect, and this is part of that effect when it becomes available, not immediately. Thank you.
Any of the members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Dee Schroder, 5501 through Red Lane. I agree with everything that Noel has said. How many of you have kids that ride? You do? How about you, Gary? Jeff, ready? I do. Do you know where that kid rides? Everywhere in this town. Anywhere she wants to go, she is, should be allowed to go. And if you do this, and you make it safe for her, I promise you, as sure as I'm standing here, you will regret it. You're all up for election eventually, and if you vote for something like this, and you don't keep it safe for my kid, and I'm only talking about my kid, because the bottom line is this, you can have 20 kids out there, and all their parents are screaming, and what do you care about? You care about your kid, and that's what I care about right now. You keep it safe for her. I don't ever want to know that her life, or her horse's life, who has represented this town many times, is in any way, shape, or form in danger. This is not a good thing, so you need to reconsider it. It's not rocket scientists. This is something that you need not to do right now, and I'm behind Noel 100% on this, 100%. Please take all this into consideration. Like I said, that kid rides everywhere. There is not a place in this town that kid has been to, 27 Vista View, Flamingo, University, you name it, that kid rides and she feels good. And when all this other stuff is done, it should be even more friendly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. My wife and I have ridden all over this town, and Davie, and we do it on a weekly basis with the South Florida Trail Riders. I suggest what you do is you lay this decision off till maybe the next meeting or meeting after, and I'll bring in some trail riders and let them add to the conversation. That, it's ridiculous. What could you be concerned about with a horse trail going through that area? People aren't going to come in, walk into this town, and carry off TV sets back through a horse trail. It doesn't happen. They take the easier way out. They drop a guy off, and they come back and pick him up. Anyway, that's all I got to say. I suggest you wait on this, this is going to be a big deal.
Bob Bergen, 5441, 190th, Southwest 190th Terrace. I printed this agenda out at like 2:00 this afternoon, and this wasn't in there. I've never seen something flash in, particularly without going in front of the Comp Plan Board like this. Not sure why that happened. You know, I'm challenged with the fact that we're, we pose ourselves as an equestrian community, and we've just created three separate equestrian communities. Country Estates becomes an equestrian community, because they can't cross over east. Rolling Oaks stays as it is, and the whole east side can't get to the west side anymore. This doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You have a recent precedent that, you know, you pushed Landmark Estates to have an equestrian entrance into their community. That was one of the provisos for putting up the gate. And here we have now, basically, you're letting another community block out all the horses. I just don't understand it. Or block out convenient access. Obviously not blocking it out, because you can always cut across Griffin Road with horses, and if you've ever tried that, you think, you probably don't think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Mary Gay Chapels, Chair of the Parks Board. And I'm pretty old, and it takes me a while to catch on, and I'm sitting there, and I'm trying to figure out what this is all about. And to be honest with you, I thought it was, okay, they're gonna, they want to make sure that Mathers is never going to go through to Sheridan. I was a little surprised that this came up, but that's what I thought it was. And then, all of a sudden, whoop, light bulb went on. And when he said, "How come it never came to his board?", my question is, how come it never came to my board? Because we're the ones that have been involved in the trails. I didn't know that this was about the trails. And I have sat through and begged and pleaded and worked on these trails since the beginning, and it was part of our comp plan, and it was part of our grants. And all of a sudden, something that happened some years back, and I'm sure you'll remember, Gary, we wanted to put a bridge. Don Mainz wanted to put a bridge for trail riders across Sterling Road. You have an easement all the way through Rolling Oaks, a very wide easement, and we were going to use it for a multipurpose trail. And Don took a hard hit for that one, from Rolling Oaks, because they don't want anybody coming into their place, period. And we have a trail going from my part of the town, from 166th, we went to 172nd. And you're right, we did make those people jump through hoops and give us a multipurpose trail, right down to chairs, if I'm not mistaken, for people that want to walk, they were going to put benches for them. So, here's my question to you, twofold. Number one, we're committed to trails, multipurpose trails. Don Mainz also worked on a trail that was going to eliminate part of Sterling Road, since it really is the road that goes to nowhere, and we were going to use one side of it for a multipurpose trail, and it was going to go up and over the overpass.
South side, you're right, south side.
Correct?
That's correct.
And it was going to connect us with Sunshine Ranches safely. And we haven't dropped that ball yet, because I introduced it to the school, because they have a traffic problem, and I thought it would be beneficial for them to review it. So now, we're going to stop any integration or any connection between Rolling Oaks and out west or east, and they're going to be totally isolated, tra-la-la-la-la. Well, not going to happen on my watch. Trust me, it's not, because they are part of us, and we are part of them, and it's a multipurpose trail, it's not a freeway, it's not Sterling Road going through there, and I'm not going to give up one square inch of that property that could be used for people to walk in safety through Rolling Oaks. Thank you.
Ashton, 5480 Southwest 178th Avenue. I thought that we were concentrating on the entranceway from 178th into Sheridan. I didn't hear much about that part of it, so is that part of all this?
I think this really does go against the whole, might say, plan or atmosphere of the town over the last 14 years. I think you need to just sit on this, maybe refer it back to the Parks Committee. It's always been our feeling that you would have horse trails and connect them up as much as you can. And I understand where Gary's coming from. I was at the homeowners' meeting, Rolling Oaks, the other night, and they were very strong about having no one come into their area. Well, if that's the case, maybe they don't really need a big park over there, if they're just going to be all by themselves. That's basically an area for horses and so forth like that, and you need access to it from other parts of the town. So I would just put that, put this whole thing back on the back burner, give it to Parks Board, or Recreation Board, or whoever, and let them work it out and get it all discussed.
Thanks, Bob. Any of the members of public wish to comment on this item? See no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second with the, go ahead, Steve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this item. I think that it's an item that needs to go back to a couple of the boards. There's too strong a difference between different factions, and I don't think it's healthy at this point to move forward. Not sure that there's a middle ground there, but I certainly would like to give the folks at Rolling Oaks and the folks at some of these boards the chance to have a dialogue and a opportunity to understand one another's positions a little better, and see if there's something that can be done, rather than taking the vote now, so I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second.
Well, right, I hear you, and I don't have a problem with that, but we have a motion and a second on the floor with those amendments, and then we'll see how the vote goes.
I think the table supersedes that.
Mayor.
Keith.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Doug.
If we could ask Jeff Katums, is there anything else pressing inside this document that needs to get done right away?
No, there's nothing pressing that can't wait for this.
Call a question.
Wait, just a second, Freddie. I'm getting confirmation of Roberts rules with regards to this. We already have a motion and a second on the, on the floor. Let me ask you another question, Doug, because you were the maker of the motion. Why can't we just get the, if, if everybody's on the same page with regards to this, turn it back over, make a motion, withdraw the motion, and the second or withdraw?
I don't have a problem with that. I'll withdraw my first motion.
I'll withdraw my table and my second.
Table and your second, okay. Now, let's start over. The maker of the motion and the second, or they've withdrawn their motion, so we've got a clean slate, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to table this.
A second.
That was quick.
A second.
We got a motion and by Gary to table, with a second by Doug. Call the question, please, Russell.
Mayor, do we have a date to table this item, too?
Do we have a time certain to table this item, too? It's going to take some time, because you've got to get it.
It's going to take some time, I don't know that we want to put a time on it.
I don't think that would be in our interest to do time.
Yeah, I don't think so, too. Give them the opportunity, listen, table's table, when they have an opportunity to debate it, and hopefully get this thing reconciled. It could be a month from now, it could be two months from now, who cares? Okay? Nothing, no time certain.
Point of information, Mayor.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Does that include Policy 13F also?
All of it. That's correct, uh-huh. Okay. Motion and second to a table, call a question, Russell, please.
Board Member McKay?
Yes.
Board Member Fisickelli?
Yes.
Board Member Breitkrutz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
And Chair Nelson.
Yes. Okay, that concludes the LPA-only agenda item. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sure it's unanimous, there are no more items on the LPA agenda. We're going to transition into our regular council meeting. Call the roll, please, Russell. Oh, I'm, you okay? I'm sorry, you asked for a delay, I apologize.
I'm good, I'm good, Mayor.
We okay?
Yes.
You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Doug McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Freddie Fisickelli?
Here.
Councilmember Steve Breitkrutz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gary Jablonsky?
Here.
Mayor Jeff Nelson?
Here. We all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, which is the consideration of the master site plan application by Coquina Plaza, Thomas Sign and Honning. The petitioner has withdrawn this item. Andy?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor. For the record, items three and four, the master sign plan amendment and the variance that was associated with it, have been withdrawn by the applicant. It was advertised, so it's, we have it in the agenda, but there's no council action required.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, item number five, public comment. Do you want to read for the record, public comment rules? I'll do it, Russell, you guys are down there busy, Keith, too. All speakers are limited to three minutes. Public comment will last for 30 minutes. All comments must be on non-agenda items. All speakers must fill out a request card prior to speaking. All speakers must state first name, last name, mailing address. Speakers will be called in order, the request cards are received, and request cards will only be received until the first five minutes of public comment have concluded. Who do we have as a first speaker, Keith?
We got Dee Schroder, followed by Mike Chatfield, followed by Gay. Are there any other speakers? Followed by Leslie Castner, and anyone else? That's it tonight.
Good. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Dee Schroder, 5501 through Red Lane. Actually, I really wanted to talk to you guys about my historical board, not as a board, but as one of the members. It is coming along, we have money, and my purpose for coming up here really tonight is, we have a meeting coming up, and this time I would like to invite Andy Burns to come to my meeting. Other than that, that's it. Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thanks, Dee.
Glad to see you're feeling better.
Mike, followed by Gay, followed by Leslie.
I have a question about my taxes.
Just name and address. Lift the mic up. You can lift it or take it out.
Yeah, Mike, so we can hear you. Just pull the microphone up to you, please, thank you.
I have a question about my taxes.
Well, just for the record, your question, your concerns, and we're absolutely figuring out a way to answer it for you.
You just got to state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm sorry, name and address for the record.
Mike Chatfield, 5770 Southwest 195 Terrace.
Okay.
The increase on the taxes is what I'm questioning about.
Okay.
I'm not really.
Go ahead, for the record, we'll figure out if we can assign somebody to sit down with you and go through it.
Sit down with somebody, have an appointment, have them call me?
Absolutely, absolutely.
The guy over there on your far right on that side table can help you, in the white shirt and the tie, all the way to the end.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
All right, thanks, Mike, Gay, Leslie, and then last speaker is Barry Noonan, thank you.
Gay Chapels, I just want to make a statement. I was talking to the agricultural tax appraiser, and...
I heard you're moving.
Well, see, that's kind of an inside joke. I have to tell everybody, when you get, if you have ag, you need to make sure that when you mail in, you're, you're still operating. It's a little green card, you make sure that they get that little green card, you call, you can scan it and fax it, which I didn't know. We mailed it, they never got it. Woo, we almost had a heart attack, and there was going to be a for sale sign on our place. But when I was talking to him, he said that my name is used a great deal with people who are trying to get ag exemption, and he said to me, "Why are you telling people that have a, a pet goat that they can apply for ag exemption?" for ag exemption?" I said, "You know better." And he laughed, and he said, "Well, you have to tell the public not to use your name." I said, "From now on, I will sign a statement when I send them in there and they're legitimate that I've worked with. So please don't use my name and go in there with a pony or a horse and say that I told you that they were ag exempt." Because that, you have to be in business in order to be ag exempt, and you must keep records and you must file a Schedule F tax return. There are a lot of things you have to do in order to be ag exempt. So I just wanted to make that statement, because he told me there was a woman in our town that had two pet goats and used my name to get her ag exemption, which she didn't get, but anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Gay.
Leslie Castner, 17400, Sunset Drive. I just want to thank Andy. I sent an email today about a Facebook page that we put in for Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue Site for Lost and Found Pets. So I just want to let everybody know that we did set up a page where people can put photos of pets that they've either lost, so that it gets out there right away, or that they've found, and hopefully we'll be able to get pets reunited with their owners quickly. So thank you very much, and hope that should be, the link should be up on the town site soon. Thank you very much.
Great idea, Leslie.
Thank you.
Barry?
I just want to thank the police for advertising Freddie's bull. He got a quick response. The bull was found, but the whole town likes the way it was done. So let's keep up the good work. We got a quick response, and he got his bull back.
Yay. That concludes, no more speakers?
No bull.
Okay, that concludes public comment. I don't want New yelling at me anymore. Just go to item number...
I'm getting really used to it.
Item number six, board reports. Any committee members, chair people, any updates on all the wonderful things that are happening? Astor? You're welcome, Dee. My pleasure. Hope it helps.
Not much of a board report, but just to remind everybody that on October 11th, we'll be having the foundation fundraiser at the Weekly Pavilion. I didn't see it advertised in the newsletter, which we hoped it would have been, but I just want everybody to know that we are working towards this, and we're looking forward to a good turnout. Thank you.
Thank you, Astor. Good to see you. Any other board members? Okay, that concludes item number six. Item number seven, council member comments. No way. Impossible. Oh, sorry. We do have a couple. Steve, you stepped to the mic first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to touch on a couple items. The first one is a bring the council up to date on a workshop that we had for the traffic in the 345, Platte 345, Griffin 345 area, and 188th. We had a very productive meeting talking about a couple of things. One was some of the traffic updates that you all have previously approved for those roads and some other things that are coming up. So residents were very pleased about that, wanted to report that. And then also, we talked about the 190th connection and the funding that, you know, has been approved by the state to do that connection. And that was, I was very pleased with the meeting and how that went, because everybody, both from the 188th side in Country Estates and the Griffin 345 side, were both on the same page that we have a good consensus on what to do with that, which is something that we've obviously been working on for a very, very, very long time. So that was really encouraging. I am going to be meeting with Griffin 345 in September, late September, to present the plan to their full membership at that time, so I'm looking forward to that. One of the key components to that, and it is, I'm pleased to say that it's a key component both from the Griffin 345 and the 188th side, is that we would not do anything to open up that road, the 190th, until there is a control structure in place, a gate at the north end of 345, so that that road would not become a through street. Okay? It is a private road. It has no speed bumps on it. It would turn into a raceway. And so I made them the commitment that I personally would not support anything that would open up that road until that structure was in place. I wanted you all to be aware of that. I'm hoping that you all will make that same commitment, that that would not be allowed. If that is allowed, then the whole project really comes apart, to be honest with you, because it's that important.
Can I join in with you?
Sure.
The road connection on 190th is our part of the road. The town owns it, not the HOA. The rest of Platte 345 owns their roads.
Correct.
We, the town, cannot contribute public money to their road closure. They are responsible, if they want to close that road or do whatever mechanism they want to do, on their own. We have no say in whatever they want to do in that section. So I don't know how we want to sit here, since we have money to do this project that's not costing us anything, hold back putting that road in because they don't know what they're going to do for a gate. The gate's not our issue or our problem. It's theirs. If they want to put a gate in or do what they want, we're not stopping them from doing it. So I don't know why we're going to hold up the project when it's their money and their choice on their property. I just don't get that.
Well, my intention would be to do something similar that we did on the three roads out west, 199, 202, and 205, where at the town's expense, we put up gates out there.
But that's not a divider from one city to another.
Want to be careful about debating back and forth. We just go through...
Oh, no, this is the only time we get to talk, and it's public, it's council comments, so we can all participate, and this is the only time we're allowed to do it.
No, I'm not disagreeing with that. I just want to talk on over each other.
Okay, yes.
What I would hope is that we would be able to find the funds to, for the initial construction of the gate. We would be able to time that with the opening of the road, so that it's there. At that point, we would transition that to the HOA, and from then on out, any repairs, any maintenance, anything they wanted to do to set it up as more convenient for themselves, that it would be completely up to them, and it would be theirs. I understand that's a little controversial, but I will tell you this, that without that component, I will not support the opening of that road.
I am not, well, we need to put that road in, for one. If they want to close it, they know now we're going to be doing it. Let them start working on a solution themselves. Why is it on us to create that solution? All we're saying is, if you want to put in a gate, design it, build it, put it in. We can't throw our money, town money, for their private use. We just can't do that. So I'm not not saying I'm not supporting you on this. I guess what I'm saying is, they have time to plan it and do it. So I'm agreeing with what you're trying to accomplish. I just don't think we should step in that mud puddle related to the money, related to that gate, related to that stuff. We are already got the money to fix the road to put it in. Me personally believe, once they have one way in and one way out, or something similar that Rolling Oaks has, they're going to be extremely happy once they adapt to it.
Oh, I think, no, no, we're past that. We're past that. They're happy with it. You know, that's what I said, was all the sides are very...
Amenable.
They're amenable to this solution, which is the first time we've done this, the first time we've ever gotten all the sides together. And like I said, this is not, you know, we've done things very similar to this in the past, so I don't, you know, I understand what you're saying, and, you know, I don't know, I, I'll tell you this, that if, I certainly can talk to them about that when I talk to them at the membership as a whole. I can, I would like to know what everybody's thought is, so that I get a fuller response. I personally am in favor of the town doing the one-time cost to build it and turning it over. I will tell you that. We are this close to getting it finally done. If this does not happen, as I said, and they are unable to do the gate, then I will fight as hard as I can to have this project not take place. I'll just tell you that. It's not, it's not fair to them, and I'm very pleased that it's, not only is it not fair to the folks in Griffin 345, but I had numerous people from Country Estates on 188th say, "We will not support the project if that gate is not in place." So that tells me a lot, that the community is really coming together out there, and I think this is our opportunity to take care of it, once and for all.
Listen, that's great to hear, and I like that, and that's all good stuff, but in a scenario like that, and we have a lot of funky, different scenarios in town related to, it's stuff like that, you know, if somebody comes along and says, "Oh, we want to do this, and we'd like you to contribute to our gate," Platte 345 in the past, from what I recall, have not been a very united front as an entire group. So to get in the gate business, for us to pay or build or put in a gate, and then listen to them complain, "Well, that's not what we wanted," or "This isn't that," or "This is broken," or, you know, I don't...
Not going to be any of it.
I think they ought to build what they want, how they want it to. What if they want a guard shack there and have a guy man it? I mean, I don't know.
It's their problem.
Precisely. So let them build it.
I never committed, I never committed to them to build a guard shack, or, well, I didn't commit anything to them. I just said I would fight for it. But, you know, what we're talking about is a gate. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, but their kind of gate, in my vision, if you're going to build a gate, you're going to have a keypad out here on this side that you pull up to to hit your access code, and you're going to have a tripwire on the inside, so when you pull up, it's going to automatically open for you to get out.
No.
And, you know, I don't know what they want, but the fact of the matter is, that all that kind of stuff gets pretty darned expensive. And if somebody breaks the gate right after it goes up, or puts their car up against it, or runs their ATV and hooks a chain to it and pulls it down, we've been through all that stuff, or rams their golf cart or their mule up against it, "Hey, town, we need our gate fixed." I understand what you're saying. You're going to pass it over to them, but...
Well, let me just address that. Number one is, this gate, the design of this gate is to have the keypad, but it's on both sides. You would need the keypad both to go in and to get out, because there's free access on the south side, so you're not, you're not restricting anybody in there. Anybody can always come and go, but they can only come in and go from the one way, which is on 63rd. If they want to go out towards Griffin, then they go through the gate either direction. It's very clear, I was abundantly clear, that the gate is going to be built, and the gate would be turned over to 345. I used almost the exact same scenario as you talked about. I said, "You can expect that, you know, somebody's going to get upset, they're going to take their truck, and they're going to plow right through it, and it's going to be your responsibility." They understand that 100%. We're going to build it, we're going to turn it over. My idea is, my recommendation is, we would build it, we turn it over to them. Our hands are done. Our hands are done forever, and they're clear on that.
Freddie.
Steve, have they ever been asked, or is there a discussion about them giving the road right away?
As far as, yes, it's been discussed many times. They don't want to do that.
They don't want to do that.
They don't want to do that.
Well, I just got to tell you, the position I'm in, we have money to build that road right away, that road piece, so I would say, let's get it built in any case. If they want to close, let them put the barricades back up or whatever, whatever they want to do, but the road's going to get built, because it can be built and not cost us any money. I truthfully think, I truthfully think that when you open that road and close 54th and 57th, and whatever they decide to do in the back is a whole nother thing, because they have some members of their HOA that are outside that roadway. I mean, I just don't know how you're going to fix that. Anyhow, I'm not going to be in favor, on my end, on throwing town money at their private gate. I just can't support that part.
Okay. I will say this, the nice thing about this solution is that all those issues on the south end with nursery trucks coming up and all that other kind of stuff goes away when you have the gate being restricted access both directions. Those vehicles are going to come up one time, they're not going to be able to get through, they're going to try and figure out a way to turn around, and then they're never going to come back through there again. So it's a nice solution, because all that goes away.
Can I jump in here for a second?
Go ahead.
Where would this gate be located?
The gate would basically be at the south end of where the park is right now. It's...
Okay, right where the, by the substation that's right there.
Correct.
All right, is there a possibility, and I fully appreciate what you're saying, and I fully appreciate what you're saying, Doug, and the relief to the residents on 188th is really the primary drive behind us?
Right.
And I concur with that 100%. How we get there is another story. Is it where we could initially purchase the gate and then bill the homeowners, something to that effect? Can that be done? So that it gets done, it gets up? I understand, it's got to get done, but can we do that?
I, you know, I hear what the council is saying. Let me have some conversations. That's a great suggestion. Let me, let me have some conversations with maybe administration, some other folks in the HOA, and see if we come up with something that's amenable to all.
Okay. I would like just to put a comment in there, Steve, for you to do it. I agree with Doug as far as, I think we should go ahead and do the roadwork, you know, even if we have to put the barricades back up, but I think while we got the money, we need to go ahead and get the road put in, and if we have to fight this other problem later, but I don't want to see a holdup on that road, because they can't decide, or we can't decide, you know, we could lose that grant that we got.
I'll tell you, Freddie, I understand exactly what you're saying. I, I know how that's going to be received, and it's not going to be good. It's not going to be pretty. And I am not going to put myself in a position where I will, you know, go against everything that I've always said to those folks for the last eight years that I've been in office, that I will never put them in jeopardy of that private road. I don't know if you all are aware of it, but they lost a multimillion-dollar suit because of traffic coming through that road, which was not even supposed to be on that road, but it got in there, and there was a major accident, they lost it. I have given them my pledge that I will not allow that road to be open without the proper structures in place, and I'm telling you that right now. I understand what you're saying. The money is there. I'm going to work to try and get the right structure there, using your feedback in a positive way, but if all those break down, and it doesn't happen, I will fight as hard as I can to not allow that road to be paved. I'm telling you that right now. Because I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to put those people in jeopardy, and, but I am hopeful that we'll be able to come up with something, and we can get the road paved, and we can get done what needs to be done.
Freddie.
Well, right now, there's a barricade there, right? What would be the problem with going in and put the road in, put the barricade back up, and let's fight that other problem later?
Because I'll tell you what the problem is, is that how many barricades did we have on all those other roads we closed, and they just kept being plowed down, pushed over, knocked over, and everything goes through? You know, I live on 195th. I live on 195th. We had a fence there, totally plowed down. We then put in big, thick, pressure-treated lumber with wire going through it, plowed down. It wasn't until we actually put guardrails in there that it finally withstood. So that's what they're going to see, and, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be an issue.
Well, I happened to take a look at that the other day, because when I was out there working on the park, I see some cars going and not coming back, so I wrote, and I see a fence there, you know, they can't get through. Why couldn't we just do the same thing? Put the road in, put the fence back up? While we got the money, Steve, you know, if we lose that money, then we're going to have to come out of our pocket to pay that.
But let's see if we can figure something out here, Stephen. I respect you trying to get this thing reconciled. Andy, or Keith, or whoever, from timeframe-wise, deadline-wise... Andy, or Keith, or whoever, from a timeframe-wise, deadline-wise, what is the, you know, timeframe where we have to utilize that, that, that funding, and not jeopardize, obviously, that being paid for by the state?
Yeah, from, from my memory, Mayor, that roadway would need to be done by December 2015.
December 2015, so we've got a year from December?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, I mean, obviously, it's not a very big project. You know, once they do whatever they have to do, permitting and whatever, it's probably something that takes a very short period of time. So, out of respect to the pri, and I certainly hear what you're saying, Doug, and I don't necessarily disagree. And I know that Steve has been working very, very hard to get that reconciled. Steve, we've got, we've got some time. If you go back, you hear what everybody's saying, see if you can get a reconcile with the homeowners, see what you come up with-
Absolutely.
And next meeting, or a couple meetings, wherever, I know you've got one coming up-
Yep.
Come back to the council, and let's see if we can get this thing reconciled.
Yep, yep. I, I agree with, thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
I, I agree with you. I think, you know, I, I, I wanted to have this dialogue, and I appreciate the honest feedback. You know, I certainly, when I say I won't support it, that is a last case, you know, all else fails kind of a thing. I don't expect us to go there, I expect us to find some way to get around it and make it all happen.
Great, come too far, I agree.
Yep. The, the other thing that I wanted to, if, if that didn't, if that didn't stir up enough controversy here, let me throw another one out there.
(laughing)
I, I did want to also, out of that same, that same meeting, a, although the meeting itself was not really designed to talk about 184th, it did become a, a major topic of the, the meeting. We spent a fair amount of time on that. And I repeated the pledge that I've, I've repeated many times, and let me get it on the record one more time, right here in front of the council and, and the town, that another thing I, I will never support is a, a four-lane road on 184th. I just won't do it. I do think that there is a, an opportunity for compromise there with the one lane each direction, and-
Get it out, I'm on board.
And, great. And, and significant berm, significant sound reduction things, to where that, that is a viable road. And that's the only way I, I would support it. With that said, the, the individuals at the meeting wanted to see where we were with that, and, and then, you know, and it always, a lot of times, it comes down to funding, or the lack thereof. And so, we talked about that, and they, they said, "Well, what have we done to try and find funding?" And I said, "Well, you know, it really, this is a long-term we had out there." And so, so the, the net effect of where we're at is, they, they, they asked if we could take a look and see where funding options would be. I wanted to see if, if that was something that this council would be supportive of. Not that we're taking any action, not that, any really physical action, we're just looking at to see what, what funding options might be out there. I did have a good conversation with Keith after that, after that meeting, really just the other day. And, and, you know, really, and Keith, I don't want, correct me when I go astray, I'll say it, and then you can, you can, you can, you can speak the truth. But, really, my understanding is, the way it sits today on the county trafficways, there really is only one funding source, and that's through the MPO. And, and if we really want to talk about different funding sources, in other words, doing it in a way similar to that we've done other projects, trying to get the state to fund it, which is probably the most, most likely way, in, in some future legislator, when somebody's trying to get re-elected again, and needs a little help in Broward County. You know, it would, the, the first step would be to take it off the trafficways, so that we could start looking at those kinds of things. So, Keith, can I kind of?
I'll just chime in. Obviously, the MPO is a very useful organization, they have their own funding source, they also have the ability to get grants. The biggest problem with the roadway that you're speaking of, being on the trafficways, is for the MPO to do that and to consider it a trafficways, it's four-lane. And for them to build it, it's four-lane. If, if it's the consensus of, of the town council, or at least the majority of the town council, that 184th, if ever constructed, because obviously, even at the MPO level, it's a long ways away, would only be a two-lane road, then, you know, you may have to go back to the MPO and, and tell them one or two things. Either A, agree to amend your plans to reflect it only as two-lane, maybe they'll consider that, I have no idea. Councilmember Fisickelli may, may know better if they would agree to that. Or B, removal from the trafficway plan completely. If you remove it from the trafficways plan completely, and, and seek to remove it completely, then it would be fully within your jurisdiction, and then funding could be up to the town whenever it would want to, meaning, then the, the sky's the limit in terms of how to find a, a funding source. You could do assessments, you could do adverbal taxes, you could do grants, you could do legislative appropriations. So, there, there are two separate issues. One is the funding, the other is, if the road were to ever be constructed, what is the makeup of the road? And, you know, one sort of drives the other. And, so I, I think it's first important to figure out where the council wants to be on the actual size of the road, and then maybe go back to the MPO through your council member, and say to the MPO, "The council would only support this as X, Y, and Z, two-lane. Would the MPO still agree to develop it if it was only two-lane?" And then you'd be able to answer the next question after that.
Okay, good. So, maybe the first step, Freddie, is, is if you-
No, I'll talk when you're through. I'll, I'll bring that under my council comment.
All right. Well, actually, that, so that, that was, that was where we were. I don't know if we want to, I don't know if we want to get more information, before I get feedback from the council, or if I appreciate Doug that you're-
I'll, I'll jump in if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead, Doug.
You know, like I said, I'm, I'm on the same page with you as far as the two-lane road and whatnot, and we, we put a resolution together to that a long time ago. So, there, there's one in play. But what I would also like to see is some kind of survey done to Rolling Oaks, to see what their opinion is.
Who? I think I can tell you that one already.
Just, just a suggestion.
I'll go next, if Steve says-
Go ahead, go ahead, Freddie.
And actually, I'll pick up 106, 184. Being on the MPO, I can tell you what the MPO's opinion has been, unless it changes, I don't know. I do know one thing, that the Western delegate has already spoke about it, but not much. But I don't know, she's been on vacation, we have meat for, of a month, and we're, we've got a meeting coming up next month, and maybe she'll speak at it then. But I'll tell you, people right now, MPO's not interested in putting in that road unless it goes in four-lane. And I've even talked to the man from the state that talks there at those meetings, and there really is no money for a two-lane road that, that the state is interested in. And I think our stand has been at least, I'll speak for myself right now, I'm not supporting anything but a two-lane road. And I think that's been our stance. If anybody's different, I don't know that. But, I tell you, your, your chances are going to be very, very slim to ever get it done. But you'd have to do it like Weston did, not Weston, I'm sorry, Merrimar. You know, 184th is a two-lane road on the south end of Merrimar right now. And it's, they put it in themselves, and it's working for them. And it's on MPO's plan in 2026, just like ours, to go to the four-lane road. But Merrimar's got a heck of a lot more money than we got. So, but as, as far as putting 184th in, I think it's a dead issue. The only thing that may rejuvenalizing it later on, if the people that bought that property ever put their portion in, that would be a different thing. But as far as right now, I'll tell you what, I, I don't think you've got a shot getting any money from MPO. I may be wrong, and I'll know a little more from my next meeting, if, if Toby brings it up from Western, but we'll see. But I know at the pass, and when I've talked about it, and I've even talked to the, to the people behind the scenes, and it doesn't look good unless you want to go four-lane. On the rest of my comments, I, at a last meeting, I brought up something during my comments, and Doug kind of shot me down, and said, "We didn't need to do it." And since then, they were going to do it, and nothing's been done, to my knowledge. If the head, I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of turn, but I said at our last meeting, that we, we got an obligation to do something for Gary Polikoff. And, and I'm still saying we need to do it, we needed to get off the pot and get to moving on it. And that's it. I don't know if the town administrator can tell me different, but we talked about it last month, and we're not talking about it again.
I, I don't believe I shot anything down related to Carrie Polikoff in any way she performed, so I apologize if you misunderstood me.
No, Doug, you didn't do that, but you took the momentum away from us. You said, "We're going to do something later." Well, here we are at the next meeting, and nothing's been done later. I want it something talked about, where are we going with it? If we're going to do something with it, let's put up a committee and do something with it. You know, that's what I'm saying, that's all. And, all I can say is, good things about the, the official park. If you've been by there, the pavilion's almost up, but they're, they're slow there. Emily's got people over there doing, doing the eradication of all the stuff in the wetlands. And we got something on our agenda tonight, on that issue coming up. But I intend to, in the next week, to get with Clea, go out there and take a look at some of the other stuff, and see if we can move it. And one of the things I will be looking for from the council is, we need to see if we can come up with maybe, maybe, I hope, that we can do it for less than $10,000. But that northeast corner needs to be cleaned. We got Phil coming in every day, all over the place up there, and we need to clear that area, and there's a big face in there that we can clean and get it cleaned up. But, December's not here, but she got the fence, oh, yes, she is. The fence is up around the playground, and the pavilion's going it up. The bathroom, they're up there plastering it now. So, we're making strides, we're getting there. So, we hope to sometime this year, have a grand opening, and have a, a party in the park. So, the bathroom, they're putting in the fixtures in the bathroom right now. So, things are moving, we're moving along. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Freddie. Gary, thank you for waiting. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
First off, I want to thank Councilman Bright Cruz for taking the wind out of my sails, and saving me from falling on my sword twice in, in two hours, okay? I was going to speak a lot about the current MPO project on 184th. Two pages of notes have just gone down, have gone away, thank you very much. I'll save it for another day. What I think we need to go at this point, on hearing everybody talk, with the exception of the mayor so far, is there seems to be pretty good consensus that the MPO 2040 Traffic Ways and Means Plan is not really viable, as a four-lane divided road. Would like to direct the town administrator and the town attorney to probably, to come up with a resolution that we could craft, and then talk about, as to getting that removed from the Broward County MPO plan, for the 2040 plan. Is everybody okay with that, or not?
You want to have it removed from the-
Yeah.
The whole thing for-
You said, yeah, you said they were not interested in the four to, four to two lanes, so let's, let's put it out there.
Let me, let me just, Freddie, I get the impression that we have gone before and before, and they've absolutely said unequivocally, that no way, no how it, we would ever support or, or pay for a two-lane road. And who knows? Things have changed, environment changes, philosophy changes. At least give you an opportunity to go before the MPO, just to throw out there, and to see what kind of feedback that you get. I would rather hear from, from you after getting together with the MPO, before I would support a resolution, because I think we're just, you know, just getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. So, when is the next MPO meeting?
September.
September? Is, is that okay?
We normally have it, but they changed it this month to a, let me get my calendar here. We didn't have the, the one, the end, the end one of this month, we didn't have one. We got the next one that's coming up in September.
Well, sometime in, in September.
It's in September, I'll, I'll get a, a thing out on a newsletter. But if sometime in September, we got a meeting coming up.
And I'm sorry, Gary, for-
No, that's fine, that's fine. I, I'm just putting it out there, that none of us are for a four-lane road. Broward County strictly wants to put in a four-lane road, and 25 years from now. It's never going to get built in its current format, that we're going to approve it. The only, the first step is to remove that. They're not going to modify it, so let's get it removed. That, that will enable other things to, to come into play later on, depending on how you're, on how you, you know, you line up on this, on this issue. So, that, that's where I'm coming from, on, on that.
Carrie?
Yes, go ahead, Freddie.
Would you have any objections to our town administrator sending a copy of a resolution saying that we, that we've already passed a resolution, that we wouldn't support anything but a two-lane road? Just to send that to Greg Stewart?
No, of course not. I'm just, I'm just saying that we would have a, if, if they're not willing to even look at the two-lane concept, that we should send a resolution, and, and give it, give it a shot by all means. That we should craft a resolution saying we want it completely removed from your 2040-
I think, I think we already have a resolution saying that. Just have our town administrator send a copy to Greg Stewart.
But we, we would have to obviously approve a resolution. But Freddie, I think if you, if you throw it out there, that this is what's being contemplated by the town, and if there's no way, no, and again, this is a project, was it 2030 or 2040? It's way on, way on down.
2026, I think.
What is it, 20?
2026.
20?
2040, I thought it was.
2040, I thought it was, I thought it was 2040 as well, so you're absolute-
It's on the 20-year plan, I think, I think. I'm not sure, I'll find out.
Okay.
I have them all right here. I found it on the, on the 2040.
So, it's on the 20, so we're talking about 25 years down the, down the road. And listen, things could change, you know, tomorrow's a new day, and other personalities that eventually serve on, on that, on that board as part of that agency. So, just to see if there's, you know, at this present, present time, if there's even the potential to generate any support for the consideration of two-lane. Just to see what they say.
You know, MPO operates a little different than we do here. And when we get an agenda, we don't really have, that I can think of anyway, that we have an opportunity to, to speak on, bring up a, I did find this out, being new to the MPO, when I first got there, I sat down and wrote out a whole bunch of stuff, and was going to bring it up at the meeting, they shut me down right quick. You don't do that. It's got to go to Mr. Stewart, Greg Stewart, his committee got to look at it, and everything for it even comes to MPO. You know, that's why I'm saying.
How about if we do this, Freddie? Just a, a, a letter from the town, from Andy Burns, specifying or, you know, laying out this scenario, to see if, you know, they would entertain it, to put it on the agenda for discussion. This is our position, this is how we feel. Would you contemplate a two-lane road? And see, see where we go from, from there.
Actually, Jeff, whenever John Canada was here, I even set up a meeting for him to go with me and do that, but we could never get it done. But that would be the correct way, is to sit down with him, and discuss it with him, and see if, if they even want to bring it up. Because I say, they got a lot to do in the day that they're doing, and not a little bit, little bit of thing going to be much.
No, I hear you.
You know, they're talking about the tri-rail, they're talking about-
Lot of things going on.
A lot, a lot bigger projects than ours. Would you be able to do that in the-
Yeah, would you be able to, to, to set that up, maybe potentially, Freddie? You and, and Andy, to see if they'll-
We could even, if you want, you could set up a meeting with them, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be the next logical step, to ma, to make it work. And then, pending that, we'll come back with other possibilities.
Absolutely.
That was all I had.
Doug?
I'm good.
Okay.[1722.32]
Okay. Couple of things, with regards to 184th, I don't have any issue with that as, as well. I would never support four lanes. Is there the potential for two lanes? Maybe, maybe not, it just depends on, on what the plans are, what, who's involved, and the funding mechanism, and, you know, gonna connect, where it's gonna connect. 2040 is a long way away, you know, we're talking about 25 years. I know there are some significant right-of-way issues that exist out there, which is a timely process to acquire those right-of-ways. I don't know if the process is eminent domain, or whatever you all use to do that. So, there are a lot of issues out there, obviously. And, you know, who knows? We've had a lot of success going to the, the state, and, you know, maybe there is a potential that maybe, you know, as a result of whatever the environment is at, at that time, and, you know, to confirm the importance of this road, or non-importance, or whatever direction you decide to go, you know, maybe take it off the traffic ways and then, you know, go with, you know, individually, with regards to the Town of Southwest Ranches, and, you know, petition the state for funding. Again, if that's something that we want to do, because, you know, obviously if it's on the traffic ways, you know, the state is gonna say there is a plan, it's for a four-lane, four-lane road, but if it doesn't exist, you know, you know, there would not be, nothing to preclude us to potentially go and lobby on behalf of the legislature to, to support funding for that road, if that's something that we wanted to do. I just think you have a mechanism potentially every year, dependent upon the environment that exists, to go to Tallahassee, and then who knows, you know, somewhere down the line, if it's that important, that maybe we might be in a position someday to support it, because, you know, with, with Tisdore and some of the other things, there is a potential, if we decide that it's something that's very, very important, that it needs to be addressed, you know, with regards to construction of that road, there are some other mechanisms potentially that can be utilized to address it. So, you know, being on the traffic ways, I think it's a hindrance now. I wouldn't have any objections to taking it off. I'm very much interested though Freddie, in sitting down and have a conversation to see if they'll leave an entertainment, entertainment, so I'd rather wait on that decision, but I think we have a lot better opportunity, you know, in the next 25 years, that potentially we come up with another plan or a funding mechanism if we decide or determine that it's a roadway that's important to the town. Freddie?
Jeff, I don't know if you remember, and I don't know if you was on the commission then or not, on the council at that time, we were gonna do that with 172nd, and we went with Broward County and talked to some of the big wigs there, and they turned around and they say, "I don't know what you're talking about. It's your road. You can do what you want with it." You know, and the same thing with 184th, it's our road. We can say, "We never want that road to go through with us," and until somebody overrules it, that's our rule. We own every road in our town, other than Sheridan and Griffin Road. And that's what they told us back then when we talked to Broward County, and I imagine it's the same thing now.
Okay, thank you Freddie. And then with regards to Gary, we did have some debate, and I don't recall Doug cutting anybody off, but I do recall a lot of ideas being put forth, and one of the ones that I had thrown out there and, and had gotten, I thought, some positive feedback, is a project of his, and Keith, if I'm wrong, please step in, because, you know, a lot of times with regards to information, it's been some time, I want to make sure that it's accurate. But you recall on the corner of, of Flamingo and Griffin Road, what is that, what's, is that Trailside Park, is that what it's?
Yes.
It was a Trailside Park? And you remember the, the issue when they were gonna go in there, and they were gonna build, you know, those-
Country.
The Walgreens or whatever, and he fought like hell because the residents were ticked off, but he was able to sell it because he was able to create that buffer, which eventually resulted in the residents, you know, going along with the construction of, of that property. And that was one of his pet projects, he was very, very proud of that. And one of the things that I had said at the last meeting was that to name that park after him, because he was so instrumental in, in negotiating, you know, a compromise between the homeowners and the developers of that property, and the fact that he was able to get them to give us that property, to create a buffer between that property and the residents. And he was very, very proud of that. And so, my thoughts anyway, with regards to this, and I know that there's a thoughts from others, is to rename Trailside Park the Gary Polikoff Park in the Town of Southwest Ranches. So, I don't know how you feel about that, I'm not asking-
Absolutely. Listen, I'm on board, I think we had to run it by the Parks Board and a couple of other things, but I'm on board with that.
And there might be some other things other people are contemplating out there that might even be a better idea than that. That's just the one thing that comes to mind, I remember how passionate he was about that, and how proud he was to be able to negotiate that deal and that, and that arrangement, so.
Mayor, can I jump in for just a second? What, what would you all think about naming the council dais after Gary? This portion of the building?
You mean this room?
The chambers.
What did you say?
Naming the chambers.
I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing Keith in the background, he'd prefer the park, I'm not sure if he would-
Well, I'm saying, I'm not saying, I'm saying both.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's a good idea. Maybe we can turn it over to the, the Parks Board or to, to talk about it, you know, that's another good idea, and I'm sure Freddie has other ideas, and I'm sure Doug has other ideas, members of the Parks Board.
Well, I don't know if any of y'all noticed it, the plaque that we did for the opening of Gasol, our town administrator did a very good thing, he put Gary's name on that, and he was really proud of that.
He was so proud of that, you're absolutely right.
I mean, his name's on, out there, but I still think we need to do other things for the man that did so much for us.
Yeah, I agree.
Agree.
So, so maybe Andy, we can throw that out to one of the, the boards for, for consideration, contemplation, some of the things that are being discussed, there might be other things that are being recommended, but it's, it's absolutely unanimous that we need to do something. He was a pioneer, he's a reason, quite frankly, with a few others as to why we were here. I still remember, you know, put the wagons out, they're not gonna infringe, they're not gonna adversely affect the philosophy that exists out here, and I'll fight to the death and ensure that it doesn't ever, doesn't ever happen. So, we need to pay tribute to Gary, because this town is, is here, this philosophy is here because of him and his fight to ensure that we remained independent and with this, and this philosophy. So, we want to give him the, the proper, he, you know, I wouldn't say the recognition, but the confirmation, he's one of our pioneers, and we need to do something, we're all, everybody agrees with that.
Certainly Mayor, and staff is, just to jump on and while we're on this topic, we are working on a, a list of possible items for you to consider in order to properly remember Gary Polikoff. I know the Rural Public Guard Board has had some discussion on it, because you may recall they were involved in the Memorial for Charlie Lynn and Johnny Dollar, so I know they wanted to weigh in, I know they've had some discussions on it, again, obviously with, with the possible consideration of a park. I know we want the Parks Board to weigh in as well, so we, we are certainly moving on this and, and just trying to, I'll say, build that support for some of those suggestions to bring to council for final consideration.
Listen, we want to pay tribute to ensure his legacy, we're all on board with that, we just gotta come up with the best thing to do in his honor. Okay. Any other, I think that's, I think that was, that was it. Okay. Item number seven, council member comments is done. Keith, item number eight, legal comments.
Thank you Mayor, and obviously on behalf of myself and my family, it's very humbling to hear the discussion, it's still very recent, so it's, it's a little surreal to me, but I appreciate it. Andy, I'll sit with you privately also and discuss it as well. So, I appreciate it. A historical story that I just thought of sitting here today. Many of you know that when the town was first created, we really didn't have a place to meet. So, we ended up meeting originally at the Montessori School, because that was the only location that we could find in Town of Southwest Ranches, because the state law required us to meet in Town of Southwest Ranches. But due to a, a private deal between us and Howard Zimmerman, who was in charge of the South Broward Range District at the time, they agreed to de-annex that half of that property and to annex it into the Town of Southwest Ranches through a special act of the legislature that slid through under the radar to make that property the town's, and that's how we ended up over there for our actual first town hall. I think a lot, you know, these are why I love the historic board, because there's so many stories like this, that a lot of people might not remember what happened and how we actually came to fruition. In regards to legal issues, CCA and Pines are in, hot and heavy in their litigation. Their trial is scheduled for the second week of October. The mayor and myself are on the witness list. I was at a hearing this morning for them, not for them, in, in watching their proceeding, and I'll keep you posted as their litigation proceeds. As it relates to Pembroke Pines and the women's prison site, that they paid 13 million for, whatever the final number was, they have it back on the market for sale. They've hired CBRE as their realtors to market the site, they've advised that they're entertaining offers over 15 million, two weeks after they purchased it or closed on it. A caveat, which is interesting to it, is the realtor said that the prospective purchaser would have to use their efforts to annex the property into the city of Pembroke Pines. So, that is currently one of their conditions of, of approval. As you all know, we've retained through my office, Special Counsel Mitch Caesar, many of you know him, the Democratic Chair, to assist in the county, Broward County's pretty Democratic, for those of you who know, in assisting Broward County and understanding how the annexation of that parcel will work. I know he'd like to thank the mayor of Pines for calling him at 8:05 a.m. on Saturday morning to discuss how thrilled he was that he was helping the town. And so far, the county has not done anything, except for today Andy got a, one of the strangest letters I've ever seen, that really looked like a Seinfeld episode, it didn't say anything from the county, except for, you know, we're in receipt of your letters about the annexation. As we continue from there, code enforcement has had a very stellar year so far, I think we're up to 405,000 in collections this year. It also shows you that the economy is coming around, because a lot of the properties that were problems for years and years are now flipping and taking shape with new owners, and that's part of it as well. The mayor, Andy, and myself met with our legislative team to start going over legislative agendas for the upcoming legislative session. What we really got out of it is everything's on hold until November, because it's still a flip of a coin right now as to who's gonna win, and that will shape what the budget will look like next year. Other than that, that is it. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Keith. Okay, item number-
Oh, wait, wait Mayor, one more thing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to mention it for the future, because I will forget, for when you have a motion, and then a motion to table on top of it, I looked it up, it requires a supermajority vote to make that tabling succeed and be a priority over the other motion. So, four of you would have had to say okay to it for that to proceed. It's a very small nuance in the law.
Interesting, oh, we did a good thing. Thank you for drawing your motion, and the second are doing the same. Item number nine, administration comments.
Yeah, thank you Mayor, just have one thing this evening, some good news, some of the residents of Sunshine Ranches, and Sunshine Ranches HOA have brought forward as an issue, which actually got to me through Vice Mayor Jablonsky. They were complaining about the striping, roadway striping on Volunteer Road between Palomino and Griffin. And so, we went out, looked at it, obviously it was very much in need of being striped. However, that section of the roadway is actually falls within the Town of Davie, it's not ours. But the good news is, the town engineer met with the Public Works Director in Davie today, they met out there on site, Davie has acknowledged that that roadway does need to be striped. They seem to be optimistic that they can get some funding for that from Broward County, so Davie's gonna pursue that. But while I don't have a timeline yet, we, we do have certainly acknowledgement, and we'll, we'll work on and try to work with Davie to continue to push them to get that roadway restriped. So, some good news from that, on that front. And that's really all I have tonight Mayor, other than I'm certainly prepared to comment on the next item and explain why we're looking to delay that.
Absolutely, thanks Andy, that's good news. Okay, item number 10, read the ordinance, a second reading.
Mayor, the, the ordinance that is on, sorry, second reading is actually quasi-judicial in nature. It wasn't labeled on this agenda as such, because Mr. Weary, who's here and represents the applicant, is requesting as they're allowed under our procedure for a continuance. So, as a result of the fact that it's the only quasi-judicial item on the agenda and he's seeking a continuance, if anyone doesn't object, we'll waive reading all the rules of procedure and turn it over to Russell to read in the item, then we can turn it over to Mr. Weary to advise what they're seeking, and then bring it to the council for-
Anybody have any objections to a continuance? No? Okay, Russell, turn it over to you.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the rezoning of approximately 1.06 acres from rural estate district to community facility district, generally located 600 feet south of Griffin Road on the west side of Southwest 130th Avenue. More particularly described as the south 173 feet of the north 844 feet of Section 26, Township 50 South, Range 40 East, lying south of South New River Canal, less the east 2,631.70 feet, and less the west 2,331.66 feet. Less the east 50 feet thereof, South Florida Hindu Temple, 5,000 southwest, 130th Avenue, application number RZ017-12, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Steve Weary, I'm here from Greenspoon Martyr, 200 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, on behalf of the South Florida Hindu Temple, and we've already got the address of the, the temple on record. I'm here tonight to ask for a tabling of this item. The item appeared before you last on July 10th, and it was deferred at that time, so that the temple and, and residents could have some time to try to reconcile their differences, chiefly concerning traffic. And what we have done is, is scheduled a meeting with FDOT, Griffin Road is a, is a state jurisdiction road, and that meeting is scheduled for September 4th. And so, we would like to have that meeting to get FDOT to weigh in on, on some of the options that we have to accommodate residents' concerns, and then meet with residents after we have that feedback from FDOT, and then come back before you on September 30th, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Thank you. So, the applicant is requesting a tabling to September 30th at 7:00 p.m. They have agreed at their sole cost and expense to re-advertise, meaning resend out notice, because it's been tabled so many times, they want to make sure all the residents know. Once the motion's made, it's not debatable, so turn it over to you to accept their, or not accept their request to table.
Make a motion to accept.
Second. Not a problem, Steve. As part of that meeting, whatever is decided, do you eventually plan an ongoing before, prior to September 30th, to the residents out there to, you know, try to, you know, as, as part of hopefully that plan, and to get it reconciled with them as well?
Absolutely, that's our intention.
Okay. So, it's a motion to table September 30th at 7:00 p.m.
Motion in a second to table for a time certain September the 30th. Russell, call a question please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Steve.
Mayor, the, the next item, which is the ordinance, is the ordinance that was tabled at the LPA level, so quite frankly, legally you shouldn't even hear it tonight as a result. So, what we'll do is Russell will read into the record, then you're required now to table it as well, because they're companion item.
Okay.
Russell, if you could read it in, then look at a motion to table.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending objectives and policies within several elements of the adopted Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan pertaining to Broward County Land Use Plan, consistency requirements, intergovernmental coordination, and local street connections, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for recertification by the Broward County Planning Council, and providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell, counsel.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion in a second to table, call a question please, Russell.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 12.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a conservation, conservation easement to be placed on a portion of the country estates' Fishing Hole Park, in furtherance of the permit requirements, approving the form of the conservation easement, and authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the conservation easement.
Thank you Russell.
Shall move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any members of public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is now closed. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, counsel seeing none, we have a motion and a second approved, call a question Russell.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 13.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending up, amending resolution number 2014-020, to replace Vice Mayor Jablonsky's appointment on the Schools and Education Advisory Board, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you Russell, Gary?
Yeah, thank you Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but I'd like to-
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but I'd like to thank Michelle Hurst for her service on the Education Advisory Board for many years. She's moving up in the world in her job, and is taking priority in her life, and we got lucky, Manon Stevens volunteered to take her place on the Ed Board, which is a very important position, and I, hopefully, you guys will approve it.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any members of the public wish to comment on this appointment? I think it's a concession, consensus that she'll do a great job, seeing none, public comment is now closed, we have a motion and a second to approve, Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes, and I'm thrilled.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcrus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Thank-
Yes. Mayor Nelson?
Yes, absolutely. Item number 14, which is a discussion item, and Andy, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and this is a modification, a proposed modification of contracts between the Melgren Planning Group and Code Services, Inc., both of whom are here this evening, I'm very pleased to see them. This is, in some ways, a difficult decision, in some ways, not, and I'll tell you why. We have two really outstanding business partners, in the Melgren Planning Group, who has provided Code Services since 2001, and we certainly hope they will get, or I'm sorry, planning and zoning services, we certainly hope they'll continue to do that as we extend their contract, and Code Services, Inc. has provided services to the town since 2006. As I said, we have two outstanding partners. The difference really between the two on this one issue, and this is what's really driven this recommendation, is I'll say to you that Code Services actually has what I call competitive advantage over the Melgren Group, in that they are based here in Town Hall, and they don't have the same overhead. So because they don't have the same overhead, it puts them in a position where they can provide some of those same services, code, planning and zoning review, development review permits, they can provide from here, from within Town Hall, with a lower overhead that they have, pass those costs on to our residents. So I have a brief PowerPoint that I want to share with you, I also have some additional pricing information on permits that I'll send down to DIA, and so you have that as well. Russell? So as I said before, the Melgren Planning Group has provided the following services since 2001. They look at our development review permits, certificates of use, they handle our public hearing items, rezoning, plating, site plans, variances, land use, comprehensive planning updates, and zoning code updates, and, you know, Jeff Keddon, who's at the table tonight, was there for the LPA item before, we believe that they do an outstanding, an outstanding job in providing those services to the town, and it's certainly our intention to keep them for certainly the bulk of those. Code Services has provided services to the town since 2006. Robert Solera, who's the President of CSI, is a former Community Development Director, and so he has done those very same planning and zoning functions. And the location, as I said before, is the Melgren Planning Group has a wonderful office, it's about eight miles from here, it's over in Davie, over by Nova Southeastern University, and Code Services is providing their services from right here in Town Hall. So what we're proposing to do is what we're trying, we try to see is, or we do see is a win-win-win-win, switch the development review permits from the Melgren Planning Group to CSI, extend both their contracts, and have it benefit, and I'm gonna go through those as well. For the Melgren Planning Group, they'll get an extension of their existing contract for those public hearing items, zoning code updates, land use updates, their current contract is set to expire in April of 2015, we're proposing to extend that through September of 2017. CSI would see an increase in their responsibilities, and increase, or extend their contract from March 2015 through September 2017. The town would benefit by lower costs for us, but also by extending the contracts of those two, as I said before, very dependable business partners. The biggest winner would be the residents of the town of Southwest Ranches, we're looking at reductions in permanent costs of a minimum of 20%, and obviously providing a little bit more convenient location for them, especially for our western residents. And just to give you some idea where some of those permit costs will fall, Russell, if you could just click through that slide to the end. Just to give you some sense, we're looking at residential additions, fences and walls, driveways and pools, just from a comparison standpoint, between where our current permit pricing is, and where our proposed pricing would be. If you do the same with the next slide, please. Certificate of conformity, slabs, patio, sport courts, detached ancillary buildings, and prefab sheds, just to give you some idea, certainly how those, and you have a more extensive list in front of you. And what we're proposing from a timeline standpoint is for October 1st, 2014, the new permits would begin with CSI, the Melgren Planning Group will work on closing out those paid, prepaid, existing open permits, and transferring over what they have in the works on that, and, you know, obviously, both Michelle and Robert have assured me that they'll work certainly as professionally as we'd all expect, and as professional as they are, to ensure a neat and orderly transition on that. And before I open up to questions, there's a couple, I just want to say a couple other things. There was a staff memo that's in your book, and it talks about some of the reasons behind this, some of the cost analysis, and I know that there were some issues that Michelle and I have discussed, and I know that she took exception to. And what I want to make emphatically clear, as we sit here tonight, is this decision is about providing, hopefully, more convenient service, and lower costs to our residents. This is not anything meant to be disparaging in any way, shape, or form on anything that the Melgren Group has done, they have been nothing but professional, and as I said before, have provided exemplary service to the town, and so our intention is certainly to continue to work with them on all those other items, it's really just the development review permits that we want to move over here. There was a comment in there on final inspections, I know that generally speaking, for what they do, a lot of their final inspections are based on an ASBelt, you know, once something is done, they need to get that done. You know, staff here has assisted with some of those onsite inspections when those have needed to be done. There was a comment about special event permits, one of the things that we're looking to create is actually a second level special event permit, so I want to be clear, there's only one special event permit that exists right now, what we're looking to do is come up with a lower cost alternative for our residents. Another item that was in there, and I really want to make sure we're clear on this, is it may have suggested, and certainly not intentionally, that for after-the-fact permits, there's a four times the actual permit cost, which is not a Melgren Planning Group decision, but that's a council decision that was put in place in order to prevent people from taking chances and go ahead and doing work without permit. There had to be a penalty in that case, that you'd encourage people to permit that work and do it properly and upfront. So the four-time permit fee that's been collected by the Melgren Group is really at the direction of council, they keep some of that, some of that comes to the town. So I just want to be very clear, if there's anything else in there, obviously, I worked through that with Michelle, but I want to certainly apologize to her if she took any of that personally, because as I said, not meant to be disparaging in any way, this is, they've only done an outstanding job, it's just we have an opportunity to move one thing over here, based on Robert's location here, his past experience, that, you know, as your administrator, I believe is, would be a wonderful benefit for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, I know that you're stepping up, you have some questions, Steve, as I suspect others will as well.
Mayor, if I may, and Steve's, I may, could we ask Robert to come up here, because I don't know if you all are familiar with his credentials, so he can present his credentials to us?
That's, I just recognize, Steve, we don't have any problem with that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor, as Mayor, council members, so thank you very much for allowing me to speak in front of you, you hear me? I have an extensive, I've been doing construction and the construction business for approximately 28 years. I've gone from being a draftman for an architectural firm in Davie County, to being in Miami-Dade, in the Miami-Dade County, in the Planning and Zoning Department, being in charge of the community councils for them, two of them, as a matter of fact, where I was the Planning, Zoning Hearing Specialist, and I became the Planning Specialist, Hearing Specialist, I'm saying. Beyond that, I went to work for the City of Sunny Hills Beach, as you all know, and I was there for a number of years, about 10 years, of which about, I want to say it's four years, I was the Assistant Director for the Building Department, and I was in charge of making sure the Building Department administrative side was working correctly, as there were a number of issues with them. I was tasked with that by the city manager to correct those issues. Beyond that, I became the Community Development Director, and as a Community Development Director, I was in charge of the Planning and Zoning Side, and I was also in charge of the Code Enforcement Department, certificates of use, parking enforcement, I could tell, you could tell I wore various hats. So it is, you know, imperative for you to understand that I've been doing this, the City of Sunny Hills Beach is mostly, in case you don't realize how it is, is mostly condominiums, high rises, and at one point, there were eight high rises going at one point, up, some of all the residences and additions that were being, taken care of by the council, I mean, of the, you know, of the city, and by myself, and I met with architects, attorneys, engineers, and trying to resolve, and trying to make sure that the issues that were being presented to them, or things that they wanted, were exactly what the town or the city wanted to have an effect for the residents. So it was a mixture of trying to, you know, help both sides, and basically it, and I would like to let you know, if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Steve? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Robert. Couple of things, first of all, Andy, I just want to really express my appreciation for this proposal as a whole, I think, I know that you put a lot of time and effort in it, and really, it's the kind of, kind of out-of-the-box thinking that I truly appreciate, and it makes a lot of sense, and I do think it's a win all the way around, and I thought it was very well done, so I appreciate you bringing it forward, and I know there was a lot of staff help, and everybody putting it together, so all that's very much appreciated. I do think it's critical that we do take a look, and I'm glad you're already talking to Michelle about that memo, I really would like to see that memo reissued, because the Melgren Group, obviously, has done a great job for us for a long time, and I would hate for, you know, if we can misinterpret it, then our competitors could misinterpret it or use it in a negative way, and that certainly is not our intention, so if we can work on that memo and come up with some wording that makes sense and reissue it, I think that would be fantastic. As far as staff, I did want to mention that, and I know this is two separate companies here, and it's not really, neither one of them is the town of Southwest Ranches, but I know we've had a great resource in Elizabeth for many years, and if it's possible to, you know, be able to retain that expertise across, I don't know if it is or not, I'm not telling you that it has to be done, but I'm gonna tell you that, you know, from my perspective, that would be great, if it could be, I would, I think that would be great. And the last thing I wanted to touch on, there was one item in there where it's some additional revenue that was being discussed, that it would be kind of split 50/50 between the town and the residents, and my personal philosophy on that is that we want this to be negative, you know, revenue neutral to the town, so I would, as much as it's kind of alluring to have another revenue stream up here, it's not really where I'm at, I would, I think the benefit to the residents is trumps it all, and I would rather have it still remain revenue neutral, and have that, those dollars go to the residents as opposed to the town, so, but great job, Andy, I really think it was a great proposal. I'll support the revenue neutral. Any other council members?
I'll support it also.
Yeah. Freddie, Doug?
Go ahead.
Me or him?
Go ahead, Freddie, who, you're Freddie?
Well, I appreciate the work you've done, Andy, I just don't think you did enough. When I'm, when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at these figures in the white over here, and the ones in blue, you know, I was hoping we could get our costs down to close to some of these other towns of what they're doing. You know, I know it's tough when you've got a small town to do certain things like this, but there's something, I guess, I, you know, I worked on this quite a bit today, trying to figure out some of the figures, and it's kind of really deceiving on it, but then I don't know all the things it takes to do some of these things. But I do appreciate everything you've done, and I do appreciate that Michelle's been with us ever since we became a town, and they've done a good job, but I'm still feel that if we can cut the cost to our town, we have to do that, there are people that are out there trying to do this, so it's our job to come up with the best plan, and unfortunately, if Michelle can't do that for us, we don't have much choice but to go the other way. I'm really disappointed, though, in the amount of it that's going to Robert instead of to the town, you know, I mean, to the people, I would think that, and I don't know, because I've never worked in those departments, and I don't really know, so I gotta depend on what you people are telling me, but I think we, you know, when you give me a sheet like this one, I'm looking at, and I see what we're charging, and what the other towns are charging, it's kind of shocking, really, you know, and it's, I'm just hoping that if this is done, and we can do it, that we can bring this second column down closer to what somebody who's over here in White are, to help us out, you know, because that's my opinion.
Doug?
Yeah, I've got to say, Andy, I think you've done a bang-up job with this plan and project that you've been working on as far as the customer support in Town Hall, because you know, a lot of people in the past have claimed having to run over to Davie, not that Michelle has not done a great job, and a bang-up job, and been with us for a long, long time, and we appreciate all she's done in her organization and everybody there. But on the other side, I've spoken to a few residents briefly about this, and the comments you see is, we should have done it a long time ago, but I think at one point, we even were talking about bringing Michelle in-house here or something, and that wasn't going to work, or didn't work. But anyhow, through and for all that, bottom line, I think the residents are going to be extremely pleased to be able to come here and get that done, and be accommodating to them, plus save them some money. The other thing, a resident, I was here today, and one of the residents was here renewing his driver's license, and he was so thrilled to walk in and not have a line or anything, and so that little feature that Rick Stark had set up for us for the driver's license is greatly appreciated, so the residents that have learned about it and come in and use the renewal of your driver's license in Town Hall here has also been greatly appreciated. So I think that fits right in with what you're attempting to do, and I think we have the staff and the manpower to do it, and Robert's done a fabulous job, and continues to do a fabulous job relating to code enforcement, because that is a thankless job. And so anyhow, thank you, I think this is gonna, you know, you'll have some kinks along the way, and some bumps in the road, but I think in the long run, it will work out wonderful, so thanks for all the hard work, thank you staff for all the hard work, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Doug. And again, this isn't ending a relationship at all, you know, we want to make sure that that's not the case at all, we're just taking over the, or Robert's taking over the permitting process, and the things like land use scenarios, et cetera, still be handled by Michelle, but as a result of this agreement also, we're extending our contract with Michelle, and ensure that we continue to get this wonderful service that you've always provided in a cooperative, very, very professional manner, so we certainly appreciate that. Lot of conversation with Andy and Robert with regards to this, wanting to be absolutely assured that there isn't any hesitation, any doubts, we talked about his history, his background, the things that he did, and there wasn't any hesitation whatsoever, he feels very confident that there won't be any scenario or issue that he won't be able to overcome, and I know that Michelle and her group will also be- know that Michelle and her group will also be there to provide input if that is ever necessary. But I want to reckon, recognize, Andy, this hard work. Freddie, you got to, you take a look at that second column, and I hear what you're saying. There's a lot that are comparable and a lot that aren't, but there's still, all of them, there was reductions, and some very, very significant. So as a result of that, and Andy, great job with regards to putting this plan together, thinking out of the box, recognizing, obviously, the very talented individuals that you have amongst your ranks here at the Town of Southwest Ranches, and knowing Robert's history and background in putting this plan together. Kudos to you. Good job, and I'm sure there's going to be a, and feel very confident, especially in my conversations with you and Robert, that this will be a seamless transition. It'll be, for our residents, much more convenient, because now they can come to Town Hall for the permitting component, and looking forward to an outstanding, an outstanding job. But again, great job, Andy, and thank you, Robert, for putting up with me as well with all the questions that I ask, because I can be a real pain, that's for sure. Okay. Any other questions, comments, counsel? Again, this is a discussion item. This will be coming before you in formal action sometime in the very near future, I suspect, potentially, maybe even on the next agenda, Andy, because I know that you want to start this October 1st of my recollection, so...
Do we need a motion to move?
No, I don't think we need, do we, yeah, it's just a discussion item. Well, it's a discussion, is there, again, in violations of Robert's rules, it is a discussion item? Is there any comments from the audience, or any comments from anybody? Feel free. If not, move forward with this plan. Again, great job, Andy, and we'll be making this formal confirmation at the next council meeting. Okay. With that being said, that concludes item number 14, discussion item. Again, CSI Milgram, item number 15, FEMA reimbursement, and I think we got some good news as well with regards to that, Andy.
Yeah, Mayor, while I had wanted to put this item to bed tonight, we're not quite there, but I do have an update for you. As you all know, as we, and I'm just going to pass this down to DIA, and I do have extra copies that we can make available. Doug? Following the settlement from Wilma, the town received an invoice from the State Department of Emergency Management requesting reimbursement, an amount of over $750,000. As you know, we went to work with our consultants on that, and we've tried to whittle that down and whittle that down. And we've reached the point now, the FEMA determination, where we are right now, is that 752 has been reduced to just under $46,000. We have one more item with FEMA that we're continuing to push. We believe, I'll say reasonably or cautiously optimistic, that we're going to be able to get that final amount down to $37,700 and change. And so right now, there's one issue, and you have the documentation there, there's one issue that we're just wrestling with FEMA on, while they respond wonderfully in the event of an emergency. When it comes to the accounting on the back end, they don't always move as quickly as town staff, and certainly Marty would like them to move. But we are, we are trying to get them to move as quickly as we can. I will tell you that the amount where we are now, at our maximum exposure, is $46,000. We have that money in the solid waste fund. We're going to try to get this resolved, but it is our intention to have this resolved and off our books within the current fiscal year, recognizing we're coming to the end of it. You're going to see this again in September, but I just want you to know, the staff is making every effort we can to whittle that down as far as we possibly can. And so that's all I really wanted to provide you with tonight, Mayor. While I was hoping to have a resolution to pay that, we're taking another swing at that $8,000. We're not ready to give up yet. Thank you.
Great, great job. Big difference, 752,227 to potentially down to a little over 37, almost $38,000. I know that when that initially came to our attention years ago, I think we all almost had a heart attack. But well done. And what was the consultant's name? I know that did a heck of a job on our behalf, that we hired, do you remember who that was?
Yeah, drawing the blank right now, Mayor, apologize.
It was several years...
But obviously, we'll have, when we bring this back for you for official action, we'll have all that information for you.
Brian's Disaster Management. I know that he came in and did a heck of a, O'Brien's Disaster Management. Thank you, Keith. Did an outstanding job. But kudos and accolades to everybody involved in this process, and we're counting on you, Andy, to finish up with a credit of a little over $8,000, but job well done. Okay, that includes item number 15, and item number 16, approval of the minutes for the July 24 regular council meeting and the August 12, 2014 budget workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any members of the public, and this is for you, Neil, because there is some times where they come before us and make us some corrections. Seeing none, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes on those meetings and budget workshop. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcrus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, that concludes the agenda. I'm sure it is a consensus. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you all very much.